Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Ms. McNamara, welcome. We'll do our open forum.
I just had two quick things. The first thing is regarding the bus monitors. We've had missing monitors on some of the Ranger buses, especially Bus 12. I did contact the bus company today and received a response that was basically, we are having trouble hiring people. So I had two suggestions. I don't know if it would work, but anyone over 16 can be a bus monitor. I know sometimes we have high school students that do work-study, so I didn't know if it's only in the morning, if that might be an option, or is there something in our contract where they should owe us? I mean, we pay them a ton of money because they're not in compliance with state law right now, and it's been since pretty much the beginning of school, and it's consistent every day. The second thing is, I actually attended the Tiverton-Little Compton Prevention Coalition meeting today, and there was a really great discussion, and one of the things that came up was middle school students integrating into the high school and how it can be a little bit scary at first. So I had offered two suggestions that I thought might be great, so I wanted to offer them here. The first was a buddy program for incoming freshmen where a senior might be able to buddy with the freshman coming in. And then the second might be a shadow day for incoming freshmen during their eighth-grade year, which again could be a way to get students to be excited to go into the high school, followed by maybe a summer barbecue for incoming students. I think that students also might be more likely to attend a school that they've shadowed at. So having juniors take on the shadow duty would mean also that when the incoming freshmen come in, they'll recognize them as seniors their following year. So again, just two quick suggestions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. McNamara, just to clarify one thing on the bus monitor situation. If they don't provide monitors, we don't pay them.
Okay, that's good to know. That was my question.
We do receive credits.
Okay, great.
Now, not to say that that's a desirable situation.
No, especially like, my kids have to cross East Road, so I've been crossing them. But again, you know, we live kind of where there's a hill coming up, so I, you know, I worry.
Understood. I just think it's important also to note that they are a separate company. They are struggling to hire people according to, you know, what they've told you, what I've heard as well. It's unfortunate, but no, we won't. If they don't have a monitor, we're not paying for a monitor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of the open forum. For the consent agenda, we have September's enrollment documentation. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Chairperson's remarks. September 23rd CILAC meeting in... I don't know where Ms. McNamara went. Oh, you changed seats. I wanted to mention it. Last night I had the pleasure of attending the first CILAC meeting of the new year. And what is CILAC? It's the Special Education Local Advisory Committee. This is a group of parents who, working in conjunction with Ms. Craigor and a few of other staff members, who meet basically monthly through the school year for the purposes of discussing special education. We have, there are parents that participate that really, they form this unit of folks who become friends, really. I saw this with their activities last year. And they're able to share their experiences with one another and ask each other for advice and so on. I think also importantly is that they've scheduled a number of workshops to be taking place throughout the school year this year. First and foremost is a workshop on November 19th for social-emotional learning at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. So please, if you have any, if you, first of all, if you have a child who's receiving services of any kind, or if you're generally interested in these workshops, you're welcome to come. The group is young but growing, and I think it's a great group. And if you do, again, if you have a child with special needs in particular, please consider attending. There are links on our website to the CILAC group, and I do, you know, I have fondness for this group, and I hope that they have another successful year as year two this year. So, thank you. Back on the agenda for under old business, approve homeschool requests. Mrs. Craigor.
We have 14 students who, families have put in their request for homeschooling. All of them have met the requirements under Rhode Island general laws, so I would ask for your approval for the 14 students for homeschooling.
May I have a motion to approve the request for homeschool?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Craigor. So, my question would be, by the way, thank you for adding the total at the bottom.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. I understand all the children that before the school year starts, homeschool. I think that's pretty self, this is me trying to get more of an understanding, pretty self-explanatory. Before the school year starts, families have already made that decision, they're never going to put their kid in our schools starting day one.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry. And then since we've started school, which has only been a little less than a month now, there's been a lot. So my question is, and I know you can't say any specifics, so line anything up, do you have any feedback on why so many have probably started school for a week or two and then quickly decided that they weren't going to stay?
I don't have any indication when they request homeschooling, providing us with the reason is not required.
Are they giving us any reasons?
Typically not.
Just nothing? So basically, they're like, hi, here's all the requirements, we're out of here. And they don't give us any feedback?
We may get every now and then, if it is a short-term homeschooling due to a medical reason or something like that, that is when we might get a reason for it. But other than that, it's just that they are going to meet the requirements of what they have to do academically and provide us with a end-of-year report. Yeah, no one left school.
So that's my next...
Your mic's not on.
Go ahead, make the point.
These families who have joined us this September have not been in school yet.
Okay, so that's huge. So they're not coming to school for a week or two and saying, something's not right, we're not happy, whatever it may be, and they're pawned. So these are mostly families that have not even been in the school in September.
And you can tell that from the enrollment report, where you can see enrollment is consistent from one month to the other. So we're not losing any students.
Most times, families go from one year, if they've decided to homeschool, they'll do that pretty much until the end, the end of, if it's elementary or middle, or whatever level they're at.
Is there a deadline that they have to do it by? It seems like they kind of come staggering in.
There is no, the law does not require a deadline.
So there's no deadline? So that's why we get them in December.
We got them in June last year.
We do send out, we do send out information, letters to the families who have previously done homeschooling when we get their end-of-year report to say, please get your report, your request in as soon as possible. So we did get more at the beginning of the year than we have in previous years because we've been requesting that, but there is no requirement for them to get that to us.
I'd like to say one thing. I have no problem if parents choose to homeschool, but receiving a request to homeschool, and this happened last year in June, I think is ludicrous. I think it's ludicrous. Your child has attended school all these months, and now in June, you're going to homeschool for the rest of the year. How do you do it? How do you catch up with where your child is? I don't understand why the law allows that, but I'm not born in education yet, so I think, just think it's crazy. I mean, as a parent, I would never, I wouldn't want to do that at that point. If I decided to do it, I'd want to do it at the beginning of the year, but that's their choice. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, on to new business. We have some fun stuff, which is always a good thing. Recognition of two Tiverton High School seniors for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Mrs. Craven.
Good evening, everyone. So I have the distinct pleasure this evening to recognize two Tiverton High School seniors who have qualified for, as commended students for the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Commended students are recognized for the exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the qualifying test used for program entry. Students entered the National Merit Scholarship Program, a nationwide competition for recognition and awards conducted by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation by taking the 2023 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test last October. So I have this evening Cooper Thomas and Nolan Page. I'd like to ask them to come up, and I have some certificates to award to them for their commended status.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. That was awesome. Thank you very much. Tiverton Food Pantry Recognition now. Dr. Sankione and Ms. McCarthy. I know, I've seen her.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You may recall a point last year, I think it was in the winter, we got a call from the Martin Luther King Community Center asking if we'd like to establish a food pantry here at Tiverton High School, and the school committee ideally approved that. It was a great idea at inception, and we published it, but for it to work, though, you need dedicated staff people. You need someone who's willing to take on the responsibility to do so. And that's Lee McCarthy. And Lee McCarthy's just done an amazing job. She deserves huge commendation from us and kudos for all her hard work. I'd like to call Lee up to the podium and have Lee tell you a little bit about the food pantry. And Lee, I got a little certificate for your hard work, too, when you're done.
Push it higher, Lee.
Lee, you gotta push the button.
Button. All right, so one thing that I, mainly what I want to say is like, this is a community effort. We had a really good night tonight. We, 32 people are going to be good for the week with food, so it was a good night tonight. But it is a community effort. I'd like to call, if I could, some of the people who have really helped. Mike Martin and his custodian staff have been awesome, especially with the setup and with all the boxes that I have to keep dumping out every week for them to throw away for me. Kevin Calisto, our teacher right now, is creating a logo for us and a new name. We're close, I think he's pretty close to that. Billy Phillips and his kids made the wood shelves that are in our food pantry right now. I have several staff members who have stepped up to help me out if I need coverage for whatever reason. Jody Kelly, Nikki McGuire, Jen Landock, Eric Marks, Vicky Blazer, I hope I didn't forget anybody. The THS staff for donating items for our food pantry on a continuous basis. Ranger Elementary, literally just last week, we got tons of snacks from them. So on their open house, they had families bring in snacks and donations, and they brought that for the food pantry. And then lastly, I also would like to thank community members, the Roberts family at the Roots Farm, who donate fresh produce every week for us. And it's, that's what makes my heart warm. So that's it.
Lee, before you go, can you just, for public consumption, when is the food pantry open?
The food pantry is open on Tuesdays, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., to families that are food-insecure that have students in any of our schools. If a student is in the high school, they can come to see me, and I can gladly come, like after school, come in, and they can come with me, and we can definitely give them some bags to go home, so they don't have to worry about that.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
I saw your, you're working through this all summer long, and I can't thank you enough for taking your time to run this initiative throughout the summer, and you continue to today. And to all of the others who are helping you with it, deep gratitude goes to everyone, but you are spearheading this. You've let it through. It's become a very successful program, according to even what you had today. So just really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Lee.
Okay, thanks, Lee.
You've always been a leader.
Thank you. What you're doing is amazing for our schools and the community. And thank you to all the people that you also mentioned that are helping you, makes a team. It's great, thank you.
We appreciate it. Dr. Sankione, you have the certificate for it?
I do. Lee, why don't you come on over? This way? So I'm going to have the school committee all congratulate you, and I can't say enough of you for doing this.
Thank you for doing this, thank you.
Okay, new business number three, more fun. Discuss and approve TMS field trip request to Sao Miguel Azores.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to introduce Ina Almeida tonight. She's our highly qualified Portuguese teacher who has a two-year plan culminating in the possible trip to the Azores with our children. So without further ado, I'll let her talk to you about that. Her partner is Kristin Adams, who is our Spanish teacher over at Tiverton Middle.
Good evening, esteemed committee members. We are excited to present our proposal for a two-year middle school class trip to Sao Miguel, the largest island in the Azores, Portugal. This immersive experience aims to enhance our students' understanding of environmental science, culture, and history. Over the course of two years, we will engage students in a comprehensive curriculum that includes language proficiency, enhance students' Portuguese language skills, focusing on speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Encourage real-world language application through interactions with native speakers. Cultural understanding immerse students in Azorean culture to develop a deep appreciation for Portuguese traditions, history, and lifestyle. Interdisciplinary learning integrate Portuguese language learning with other subjects as social studies and science. The trip will not only foster teamwork and personal growth, but also provide a firsthand experience of biodiversity and conservation efforts. By visiting Sao Miguel, students will gain invaluable insights into global perspectives, making this an enriching and transformative journey that aligns with our educational goals. Thank you for considering this opportunity to broaden our students' horizons. So I have the proposal here, and I'm going to give you twenty-two copies so you can...
Thank you, Ina, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you just had the proposal now, so...
Just don't go too far.
Do you want us to stand here?
Well, in case anybody has questions.
Okay.
So may I have a motion to approve the field trip proposal for Tiverton Middle School, students to go to Sao Miguel Azores under a two-year program?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion for discussion.
And I will open it up to discussion. Mrs. Pavo?
I have a few questions. It's a two-year proposal, two years from now, two years...
Proposal, yes, working.
So I have a few questions. What grades would the students be in that would be attending? Would it be six through eight, or would...
Now, seven through eight. It's going to be seven and then eight. So it's a two-year program. So we'll start working with this year with our seventh graders, and then end up with eighth grader, them being eighth graders.
Okay, so they will be eighth graders when they...
Yes, when they travel, yes.
On the trip. That was one question. How many students do you anticipate?
We don't know yet.
You will allow everyone that is interested?
The seventh grader, yes. But there will be like, we're bringing, we're making, like, students have to be behaved, they have to apply themselves to engage in school assignments and schoolwork.
Chaperones, what's your ratio that you anticipate? I know you don't know right now, but...
Right now, we don't know. We need a parents reunion that's, if you approve this, we'll meet with the parents, and then we'll talk about the project and see what can be done about that.
I have to be honest, I am very nervous about this. We've never taken, taken, to my knowledge, students that young that distance. We've done smaller trips, we've done New York, we've done little trips, but this is a huge, huge trip.
So I am from Sao Miguel. That's why we start thinking about a place where I know well, and would bring the students to a safe place. As you know, Sao Miguel is a very small island, and it's very safe to be there.
I've been there several times.
Yeah, so...
I'm just very nervous about the age group, that's all, that's all.
So, Mrs. Pavo, you raise a valid concern in where this is a two-year program.
Right.
I'm wondering if we could consider approving kicking it off and asking for a subsequent approval at the beginning of year two to commence with the plan to take the trip? In other words, you know, I wouldn't, my opinion would be to encourage you to go ahead and get started, and I understand why you're taking two years to do this. But right now, there are a lot of unanswered questions, and perhaps at, you know, when you commence the actual planning for the trip itself, perhaps come and get approval at that point. Would that make more sense?
Or maybe when we do the parents' meeting, we can come again and have a little more detail for you about that.
As to how many chaperones you would expect?
Exactly.
If you have commitments from people to join, if you have funding secured. Mr. DeCortis, I don't want to take the whole time, but did you have anything?
So first of all, it's a great idea. I'm all for exploring new avenues for kids, and I think middle school's a great place to start. I think when you get them involved that early, you're really going to kind of quench their thirst to go to high school and want to keep doing this. I think where they're on to, I'm in the same exact level. I think this is great for us to get the information that this is starting, it's a great idea. But I think maybe coming back with a little more robust details, because like Ms. Pavo said, it's a big deal going out of the country. We just had one for sports about going to Florida. I think that one's something we've done before. I think we kind of know the details. This one is different, and I think maybe the next planning you have with parents and came back with a little more robust, like this is what we're going to do for chaperones, where we've identified we would stay, our agenda, the cost. I think we would probably need that type of information.
Well, the cost, I cannot tell you right away, because we need to know more or less how many students are going to be engaged.
Sure, right. And I think that's part of the exploratory part of it is, like, tonight's like a briefing, right? We're all in this together. I think we're agreeing, this is a great idea, and I think for us to approve, approve it, I think would be to have some facts to look at, so we could say, we're stamping this and you run with it. Because I think that's what our role is, to put a final stamp on it. This is more of like a preliminary, am I right on that, a preliminary?
You haven't contacted a travel agency or anything yet, have you?
No.
Because it's still in the planning stages.
Exactly.
Yes, okay.
But for that, I need to meet with parents, and I need to know. So I need from you, give me the opportunity to start this and see how it goes.
So to make...
We need the opportunity. It's not me, it's we. It's the two of us.
So we have a motion in a second. What I would like us to do is to reword our vote this evening, to indicate approval to, by all means, start working on this, but with the requirement that before any travel plans are made or solidified, that you come back and then gain approval. And then you'll know how many children, how many parents, or at least have a much better idea as well on the finances, and what you plan to do on this trip as well. Because I realize it's way too early to determine, you know, which cathedrals you're going to visit and all of that, right?
I need at least, next summer, I need to have everything, because I'm going back to the Azores, and I need to plan everything there. The buses, the hotel, the...
Why would you have to do that? Why wouldn't your travel agency do that?
Because we're not going to a travel agency, we're going straight to the airline, Sata Airline. It's a way of getting cheaper tickets. And then this, this, there's not a problem with that.
No. That, that is something altogether different. We've never done a trip without going through a travel agency. I mean, that's, this could, this could be a huge liability if you had, I just never, we've always planned trips through a travel agency.
I think to back up Mrs. Pavo's point, if something went wrong, it would be on you booking it on your own, where if it's a travel agent...
And then it would be on our...
Then it's on them. Like airlines or hotels aren't booked, or there's something wrong.
Or something...
We have an accountability to, like, for instance, I work for a private company. Everything we do go through a vendor, right? Puts all the itinerary together, flights, hotels, that kind of thing. If anything goes wrong, or anything happens to our students or our parents, everything's locked in through, through a travel agency. And I think it's one of these liability-type things.
So I would like, Mr. DeCortis, if you would consider amending your motion, to make it such that we are granting approval to begin the exploration year of this project, to begin the planning for this trip to take place in two years, and require that you come back for final approval before making the trip arrangements, at the right time, whenever that may be. I don't know how long in advance you need to actually book anything.
Was this your motion?
Are you willing to make that motion? I know it's a lengthy one.
You want to just rescind your motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Not your motion.
Sure.
It's your motion. That was your motion. You made the motion and began.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes. My motion, I would like to amend the motion to allow the discussion and the planning to begin for this trip, and then to come back to the, to the committee when you have a lot of the solid details.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Ms. Pavo, this way, if they have details, then we can discuss again, right?
I just have, I just have a problem with the age group, with not going through a travel agency. That's our insurance.
Sure.
That's our insurance.
But maybe, but maybe now when they...
If she investigates, you know, if she goes forward with the exploration...
But now she could talk to people.
And I'm going to see, find one that...
I mean, the first part is you've got to have a meeting with your parents.
Yes.
That's important, because then you'll get an idea of what, how many kids may be around, parents interest.
And you could have multiple proposals.
Yes.
You could say, here's one that's least of a cost for everyone, here's one that's more expensive that you mentioned with it, and that way, we get to look at things and then we'll come to a decision. But I like, I like the idea.
I would also recommend that you... I would also recommend that you, you know, network with your fellow employees here in Tiverton who are accustomed to running trips like this, um, to, to get some pointers from them. So, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. I'm sure I didn't skip me in there. Item number four, discuss and approve new ping pong club at Tiverton High School.
Hopefully, this is a little bit easier. So Nick Monahan is here this evening with Mr. Tavarez, who has agreed to be his advisor, um, no, that's Silas, sorry. Nick is here this evening. He's been very patient over his, um, request for the ping pong club. We had the locker room project going on last year. I had to put him off quite a bit. So I'm gonna have Nick come up and give a little bit of information about the club and I request your approval for the club, please.
Hi, um, I was looking to like start a club that's like inclusive for, um, anyone can join it. I don't know.
Nick, is it for high school and middle school?
It is for high school students.
For high school students, okay. And it's for anyone, anyone could join? And it's after school?
After school, yes.
And, um, like how many?
Mike, can we have a motion before we start discussing?
Sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve the ping pong club.
Do I have a second?
Good. Got you a second?
Okay.
Okay, am I good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many days would you see this happening after school?
Probably Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, so the days, we have the late buses on those days? Okay. And my last question is, how many people do you think will, would be in this, would join? Or you've probably talked to people?
Uh, we put up a sign-up sheet during the fair. We got six people, but there might be more, you know, uh, once the word gets out that it's approved.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I did see in the request that materials, including tables, paddles and such are already available? Is that something the school department already has?
Yes.
If I had known. I'll, I'll just tell you, when I was in high school, we had a ping pong table in our gym. And those of us who got to school on the early bus, got to go play ping, play ping pong before classes and it was the best part of the day for me. So, there you go. Anyone else have any questions? Yes.
Would there be a cost to, to be part of the club?
No.
And would you need an advisor to supervise?
I already have two advisors that would.
Okay, that's all I have.
And who are your advisors?
Uh, the gym teacher, Ms. Core, and the English teacher, Mr. Lees.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
If I, if I come by, will you let me play? Because I like playing ping pong.
Sure.
I do.
Any other questions? Did you want to tell us anything else about it?
Not necessarily.
Okay. All those in favor? You are approved, sir.
Nice job. Congratulations.
Okay, next, discuss, this is so much fun tonight, we're having a good time.
It is.
Discuss and approve new trading card game club at Tiverton High School.
Thank you. I have Silas Rodriguez here this evening with Mr. Tavarez, who is his advisor, to, um, ask for your approval for a trading card club at Tiverton High School. And I'll have Silas come up and explain the club and hopefully you'll approve his request.
I would, uh, like to start with, good evening, school committee. I ask for your approval for the new trading card game club for high school and, um, it's going to be a trading card game club where every week we'll either teach a new trading card game to the members for half, if not like just the first quarter of the time we have and then the rest of the time will be spent playing or, um, trading cards if we need to. Every week, we're either teaching a new game or if it's up to the request of the students, we will, um, make sure that some, that if a game is in popular demand, we will do that game and we can only repeat a game two weeks in a row and then that, that game won't be repeated the next week. So say, someone wants to play, like the entire s- club wants to play Pokemon, we'll teach Pokemon that one club meeting. Next week, you, we can play Pokemon again. Then we would have to switch to a new game like Magic the Gathering so we don't have a run-in of like the entire club being just about one trading card game. So the trading card games included will be like pretty much every trading card game in regards to like popularity. So Pokemon, Magic the Gathering, Card Fight Vanguard, Yu-Gi-Oh. There's a couple more I don't really know about. I think Digimon is one. And there's one more thing I would like to mention, that is monthly tournaments. So every month, we would like to, um, present a tournament to engage the players in, um, friendly competitive play with each other and the winner of that tournament will either get a booster box for the game of the tournament we're playing or a couple of booster packs from a selected set that will be spun on a wheel, including all of, or most of the selected sets. So if we have one week, we have a Yu-Gi-Oh tournament that next week we'll put, um, Yu-, the most recent Yu-Gi-Oh packs on a wheel, spin it and then we will bring, I'll bring that pack in, I'll bring like three to five. So the winner of that tournament will get three packs and the runner-up will get two. And then the rest of the players will obviously get consolation prizes for playing. So that's about most of the stuff that we have. Everything else will most likely be disclosed in the invitations about like, um, times that the club will meet up. It's obviously after school. But, um, the days we most likely will be meeting is, um, any day that late buses are available. So if late buses aren't available that week, then we can just, um, cut off the meeting for that week.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the trading card game club for Tiverton High School?
I'll make the motion to approve the trading card club at Tiverton High School.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any discussion or questions?
First of all, Silas, great job. Um, I have a son that did his early thirties and he was into everything you're talking about. So I remember everything very vividly. And I have one question. If Mrs. Pavo wants to come, will you teach her how to play?
I offer any skill level of players to play and if, and if anyone, if anyone wants to play, including any of you guys, just let me know.
Do you bring your own cards? Does each player bring their own cards?
You can bring your own cards or if someone is offering for you to play some of their decks, like me, I have, um, I have a bag back here with four decks in it. You can, uh, play their decks if they allow you to, but the condition is that you must keep their cards in good condition or otherwise you may have some disputes along the line of like, you damaged my card, so now you have to pay me a new one. But if it's like horribly expensive, you might as well have to get it yourself. But that's pretty much everything that I have to present about the trading card game club. I'm heavily excited for this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we ready to take a vote?
Yes.
I'll just say you had me at Pokemon. All those in favor?
Congratulations.
You are approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the serious stuff. School improvement plans. We will kick things off with Tiverton High School, Mrs. Craven. Thank you, Mr. Tavarez.
Thank you.
I have to say, uh, that's a highlight of my day. When students come to me with club proposals, it's really incredible to hear their excitement and their willingness to come to this meeting and present to you for approval their proposal. It's really, um, a great part of being a high school principal, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Tiverton High School's school improvement plan twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, if you look at the next slide, I'm not sure you can read it from here, but our, our high school's school improvement plan is aligned with the superintendent's strategic plan for the Tiverton School District. There's three priorities in that plan, academic excellence, student well-being and employee development. And as I go through this slide presentation, you'll see how everything is aligned to that. So our first priority is our graduation rate. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, in two thousand twenty-three, we maintained a one-hundred percent graduation rate for the graduating class. In two thousand twenty-four, we maintained a ninety-nine percent graduation rate. We'd like to continue that progress with this goal. Um, as you know, getting students to walk across that stage is ultimately my job, right? And I couldn't do it without the faculty and staff in this school, but that's the goal. That's the, that's the home run, if we get students to cross that stage. So obviously, this is one of our goals. Our second goal and priority one is our SAT, PSAT and next generation science assessment results. We will improve scores with, um, by June twenty-twenty-five, improve SAT and PSAT, English, Language Arts, Math and NGSA scores by five percent a year over the next three years. Our scores in ELA and math for Tiverton High School have been steady over the last few years. However, we'd like to see an improvement in those scores by implementing an action plan that targets necessary areas of growth. Outlined in, um, this plan is the strategies and action steps and the timeline is twenty-four, twenty-five. Obviously, it's progress monitoring as we go through these action steps, so it's a continuous cycle of improvement. We don't know what will work. We have to monitor the students and see if the action plans that we roll out will be effective. Priority one, the next goal is, um, academic excellence, writing. We will, by June twenty-twenty-five, execute a writing plan in core content and co-curricular areas across grades nine through twelve that will have at least four common writing assessments linked to Common Core and next generation science standards, a defined score in Rubrik and a window of execution. This has been a goal the district has had since the two thousand twenty-one school year. We'll continue with this goal so that all THS faculty and staff members have a common understanding of expectations, writing rigor and assessments so that the effective outcome will be improved academic performance and writing for all students as evidence in SLO data, student learning objective data, AP scores and student progress reports. And finally, um, for academic ele- excellence, we have another goal in priority one which focuses on implementation of the portrait of a graduate competencies, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, empathy and responsibility. So students at Tiverton High School are expected to perform in all academic areas. But across the nation, colleges and businesses stress that there is an increased need for development of twenty-first century skills. And that is just what our portrait, portrait of a graduate is. It's the, um, it's the development of these skills and implementation of these skills in everything that the students do throughout the school day. Moving on to priority two, which is student well-being. Attendance, we will be, by June twenty-twenty-five, execute a plan to decrease high levels of truancy and attendance at Tiverton High School by five for seven, five percent. Student attendance and truancy has a direct impact on student learning and academic success. Tiverton High School has an average of thirty to forty students absent every day and twenty-five to thirty students late each morning. This goal focuses on the implant- implementation of a multi-tiered system of support that benefits and supports students who are chronically absent at Tiverton High School. And employee development is priority three. It focuses on the professional development for our faculty members. We have, um, across the district, had professional development in project-based learning, artificial intelligence, the cognitive context, which is the, um, Green Book strategies and project-based learning. So we want to continue that goal by giving the teachers the, um, professional development that they need so that they can be more effective in the classroom. At this time, are there any questions you have for me?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mike.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This reminds me of what I do for a living. Everything is very well planned out. My one question is, um, I think I ask this every year, and not just to you, but I know I've asked it for the middle school as well, the five percent for the absentee rate. Where is it hovering right now? You said thirty to forty a day. We have four hundred and thirty students or so?
I can tell you that today I went through the, um, attendance rate data with my student support team. Right now, we have sixty-six chronically absent students in, at this time of year, which is excessive.
For this early in the year?
For this early in the year, that's excessive.
Are they spread out amongst the grades?
Spread out amongst the grades, but part of the problem is, um, dismissals and tardies as well. And students are considered chronically absent if they're missing class time in addition to actually not coming to school. So, um, we're hoping that our new attendance plan will curve that a little bit. But as you know, across the state of Rhode Island, attendance is a big issue. You know, we can't teach kids if they're not here. It's basically that simple. So it, it, it is an issue and it continues to be an issue. And I think COVID has, um, definitely contributed to the issue. And I think that's why the homeschool rate has increased without a doubt. If you could stay at home and in your bed and use your computer just to go online, then that's preferable for some high school and middle school students without a doubt. It's not the best, as Elaine, you know, spoke about, but it is something that has changed.
I think it's almost like when we talk about, you know, how the overall number of students is down, you know, people have less kids, you know? There, there's factors that have changed. Like, there's always gonna be a before COVID and after COVID discussion. And you're right, I remember even attending graduation.
Right.
Students spoke to, we did classes in our bed with our laptops, you know? And I think it's been a long crawl out of that. So I commend you for five percent. I know it's probably aggressive, but if anyone's gonna do it, you're gonna get it done. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I mean, there will be, it is difficult because sometimes, you know, families don't understand that the, the significance of, you know, five minutes, ten minutes a day and how it contributes to, um, the progress a student makes in school. However, you know, growing up, you go to school, right? That's just what we did. There was no excuse to stay home.
A lot of mornings, but I want, I don't know if I wanted to go to school, but someone made me go to school.
It's, it's just what you do, right?
Okay, get up, let's go.
I think, um, on that same vein, didn't we implement a, uh, a new in-house court, if you will?
We did. We did.
Is that what you're referring to with filing truancy petitions?
That's correct. So we have a magistrate. Um, we just received a communication today that they will be at Tiverton High School on, beginning November first. And then they'll be at the middle school, we'll, they'll see elementary cases there. So once we go through the, uh, multi-tiered systems of support, so first it's a letter home, you know, telling families, look, you know, your child has, um, been absent this many days from school, which exceeds the ten percent for this, the amount of time we've been in school. The second letter that goes home, it's usually a meeting with administration. Third will be a meeting with our social worker for an attendance improvement plan. And then the fourth tier will be a referral to the magistrate for a family court petition and a call to DCYF at that point. If we've, if we've exhausted all options and. and a call to DCYF at that point, if we've exhausted all options and the student still does not come to school.
Thank you. Elaine, did you have anything else?
I have nothing. That was a very good presentation. My question was, the other thing I wanted to know, Diane asked about the school magistrate. You know, the thing is that we also, don't we also have something in place where if you're 20 minutes late for that first period, you have to sit or go to another room? So, you miss the period. So, every day, that's not.
Yeah, we don't do that at the high school. I mean, time out of class is time out of class, right? We don't want to penalize the student. Even if they come in 20 minutes late, they're still sent to the classroom. We want them to be in that seat as long as they can be in that seat.
Because it was a disturbance to the classroom by letting the kid go in half or three quarters of the way through the class session. And I was going to say, if I'm a person who comes to school late every day, even though the periods rotate, I could purposely miss my English class every day if I hated my English.
Right.
And so, you're missing so much time in a certain subject. I mean.
And I appreciate you making that statement because it's time out of class in addition to time out of school, right? Because you can last period every day, leave school early, and our periods, the last two blocks of the day are locked, so they don't rotate for students to go out for workplace learning. So, you can miss a period every day if you're leaving early, and then, you know, you leave and you're so far behind. But I do appreciate you making that statement. Thank you.
Thank you for this.
You're welcome.
I'm not going to pepper you with a whole bunch. I'll save some for this.
You can pepper me while you want. It's your job.
But I will ask a high-level question that I'll ask each of the presenters tonight. How did this plan come together? Is this your plan alone, or is this something that you worked with others on?
So, it's always aligned vertically with the Superintendent's Strategic Plan. So, it's not my plan. It's the Superintendent's goals, and we look at, you know, what are the needs of the district, right? And that's essentially when we meet as an administrative team, what other district needs across the board. School improvement is huge in the state of Rhode Island. So, we also have recommendations that come from the Rhode Island Department of Education relating to school improvement and how we're going to basically improve our schools. So, we start there, and then the Superintendent writes his strategic plan. I vertically align my goals as a school improvement plan with his goals. And then the teachers align their student learning objectives and professional growth goals with our goals. So, it's vertical alignment across the district.
Okay. And the school improvement team, that's part of this process as well, have they, did they have a say in this, the development of this plan?
So, we have on our agenda for our school improvement team this plan next week. I always present to the school improvement team. I always take their recommendations. Some of this is just recommendations that come down from the state level. So, you know, it's not necessarily something we can change or alter. But I always look for approval from our school improvement team. I sent out an agenda last week, and we have our first meeting at the end of the month for their approval.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know. Does anyone else have any questions? This is, we're not in a position where we approve these plans. We're here to hear about the plans, to give our opinions, but I don't know if anyone had any questions. Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything else. Anyone else? No?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next victim.
Hi, everyone. I know you had some concerns about the trip to Portugal, so if you guys need me to go out maybe 10 days early, make sure it's safe for the kids. I'll volunteer, so I'll throw that out to you right now.
You are, you are a good, I'll tell you, you're a good man.
Good job, Mrs. Craven. You answered that question perfectly. That's why I just whispered to you. So, my goals are also aligned with the mission in the district goals. So, some of them are similar. I'll sort of highlight anything that's new within them. First goal for us is our English Math goal, increasing the scores there, and also taking into account our special education children. We had a little dip there over the last couple of years, so that also went into the factoring of this goal. This year, we added to our special ed teachers to teach structured reading. They had the letters training over the last couple of years that came on the heels of the reading committee that we formed last year. And we felt like that was very important for our kids. But we also didn't want them to miss wit and wisdom, so we structured a period for their traditional wit and wisdom. We don't want our kids to miss their reading class, but we also have some children who need some real strategic structured reading, phonics, all the things that they might have missed along the years, and it's vital that we catch them up. So, we put that in. We also have, which we had last year, a wind block, and that really ranges from anything to support in math and reading, to PE, to social-emotional learning, small group. We did a Legos block for many of our kids last year. I loved it. Children who may need a little bit of help making friends, and that was highly successful, so, but also incorporated in there is support for children who needed in reading and math. Our interventionists, we have two interventionists in math, two in reading. They also sort of take that next level of student that we still need, that we still recognize needs support, so we keep those groups very small. They also will push into some of the bigger reading classes for some kids who need a nudge there too as well. Last year, we threw that, threw a grant. We purchased Lexia Reading, so all our children have that. We tend to run like that wind block four days a week. One of those days is a catch-up or a makeup time. The other one was just flat-out reading on Lexia, just a half-hour reading, pleasure reading, and that worked out very well. Teachers told me they really enjoyed that period. They actually did a little reading themselves, and our kids moved along the Lexia program very nicely. Our second goal, and some of these, honestly, we're trying to make them work. Frankly, professional learning communities, frankly, are probably the most important thing that ever came down the pipe for teachers, probably 25, 30 years ago. In essence, they answer, our professional learning community answers a couple of questions. What do we want our students to learn? How do we know when they've mastered it? What do we do for children who aren't as far along as we'd like them to be? And how do we challenge our kids? That was built into our schedule last year. Because of the cuts, we asked our teachers to teach five blocks. So, in essence, our professional learning communities were cut right out of our schedule. That being said, as we always do in education, we find, somehow find a way to make things work. I pretty much said to the staff, "Let's use our monthly meeting, a little bit of professional development time I think we can squeeze in this year, in a day or two after school." Those meetings that teachers have are vital for the success of our kids, frankly. We also have the writing goal, four writing assignments or writing prompts per teacher that's part of their professional writing goal, their SLOs, their PGGs. We meet with all of our teachers. We already started this process where teachers will come, whether there being a full evaluation or not, and they tell us what their goals are. Part of that, and we'll mention, all our teachers have a writing goal. Many of them have a project-based learning goal, and that just follows all of these things, as Sue said, right from the top down. Just, if there was anything new in the writing, that's been a goal we've had for a while, and I think that's been a big reason that our scores have started improving. That was an area that we realized two years ago with our testing was low, so we've sort of beefed that up. Project-based learning and AI, we've had a lot of training in both those areas over the last two years. If you're, sort of the definition of projects, project-based learning involves students developing and constructing a hands-on solution to an authentic problem. Last year, for example, our grade eight did one on water, like town water, Tiverton water, how it gets to your home, who helps it gets there. We had guest speakers. They did presentations to their, to their own groups. They did presentations in front of the faculty. So, it's a lot of hands-on learning for kids with something that's authentic. It's not something like a teacher just made up. So, that was one this year, last year. This year, we're sending our seventh-grade teachers to have that training again. They'll put on like a giant capstone project, but there are many individual projects going along the way, and our kids really enjoy them. Our other goal is the truancy one, and as Ms. Craven mentioned, the magistrate will be here. I think you guys know we lost our bridge program. That counted for an improvement of close to 5,000 school days in the last two years. So, again, we're trying to make do without it. We don't have a choice. So, I do feel like the culture is starting to shift if kids come to school. We spend a lot of time working with families. I think the judge will help. We found last year that more of a therapeutic approach was better with families. It just wasn't, "Well, we'll give you, you know, two detentions." That wasn't working. So, we're still doing the social-emotional learning things during winter, just trying to get to the root of why some children don't come to school. I agree with Mike, it's like this slow waking up from COVID, and we're certainly not the only town. It's not only Rhode Island, it's across this country. I think I heard last year was, attendance was down 30% across our country last year. So, it's a real issue getting our children to school, and I could probably give you 10 reasons why it's so different than when most of us were children. But the last one was our Chromebooks, making sure that they're in the hands of every child in the middle school, that we're using them to enhance learning. Last year, our librarian, who we do not have anymore, sort of managed them. We've developed a little different strategy out of the office. We made sure that every classroom has two extras. So, if a child comes in, it's not working, not charged, there'll be one for them, and that, and thank God for Dan Andrade and his partner, Mako, they keep them up and running, and so far, so good with those. But it's a little bit of a shift of getting them into the hands of the kids, but they've been good so far. I think that's it.
Okay. We're going to start off, Mrs. Pavel, do you have any?
I have nothing.
No?
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, I'm going to make you go last this time. I could see him, he was jumping. You'll get his moment.
Are you keeping your mouth shut?
I really only have a couple of questions. First, on your first goal about improving English Language Arts and in math, you mentioned that the scores have not been consistent over the last few years. Does that indicate that the scores have been declining?
No, I believe they've actually been on the uptick. I know we had a little blip with our special ed students, I think last year. I don't know why that's doing that, but the scores are pretty good. I think we were ranked pretty high, but, you know, I think there's always room for improvement. There's still a lot of our children below level in reading, and we just continue to attack that. You know, even though you might have had a good year or two, every year changes, every grade level's different, and we're just not going to rest on that. I do think we're, you know, and I'll go back to your other question, these goals are what our children really need here. They come down from the state, through Dr. Sanquioni, through us, through our teachers, through our school improvement committees. We're attacking all the right things, and our teachers are working like mad to make sure they happen. It's a lot, these are lofty school improvement goals. There's not a lot of easy in here.
So, and I will then yield my only other question then, this is a little higher level. How are you going to know if you were successful? And when are you going to know if you were successful with these plans?
Well, I think some of the truancy, you know, that's sort of a data one, right? How many of our kids are considered truant at the end of every year? English Language Arts, we base them a lot on our RICAS scores. We take a real good look at that, what areas we need to improve on. As I said, I think two years ago, we realized a big piece of that was the writing. So, we put the hammer down on that, making sure we're writing across the curriculum, adding the amount of writing prompts, different types of writing to the thing. So, I mean, that's obviously a big piece. And then I think our teachers are well-trained to know how their kids are doing as well. So, we do have those conversations. What do we need? What do we need to get better? You know, I think that the message is clear across here that we'll do whatever it takes to help the kids here and get the right equipment in the teacher's hands. So, I feel like we've been on a pretty good, steady climb, but I, you know, you say that and then you slip back, you know? But I do think we're doing the right things here.
Okay, thank you. Mike, go for it.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask you the same question I asked Ms. Craven about how's attendance out of the box coming in different from last year?
I would say better, Mike, right now. I know this one family, but sometimes, you know, there's always a story, and I don't mean that, you know, that's what makes it tricky, there's some very sad situations that happen, and, you know, we just don't want to go in, but we want to get their kids back. So, I would say right now, we're okay. I know there's one family in particular I'm working with right now, with Jackie Smalden, who helps us. But, you know, we're just going to do the best we can, and hopefully, the magistrate helps, and we give, you know, for, as I said, it's, the therapeutic approach worked for us, and it might be just, you know, when kids fall behind, they feel like they're desperate and they can't catch up. When we give them that opportunity, say, "No, you can catch up. You're okay." Many of our kids just started coming and coming and coming and coming, and they didn't even go to bridge anymore. They made friends, it could be a friend issue. Middle school's a tough age. And, you know, again, I could write a dissertation on why our kids aren't coming to school. Social media, violence, school violence, stuff that we didn't even give a thought to, right? So, we try, and I think you know your kids are there. We try to make the middle school as cozy and comforting and nurturing as we can, but it's also, it's a really hard age for kids. You know, it just is. We love them there, and the teachers there love the kids there, and that's, you know, we don't want to be in the high school. We don't want to teach elementary. We want to be in the middle, and that's how I've always felt too, so.
Well, when I taught, I was in the middle school, so I was there.
Yeah.
So, well, I appreciate the feedback, and I wish the whole staff well. I know middle school is a tough age. One of my daughters is just starting their track right now in fifth grade, so I know it's not easy. It's a very tough time for kids, but I guess the hope is that we make that environment, you know, enough for them where that we know that they're loved and cared for, and they show up, right?
Yeah. I went to the track meet this afternoon before I came in. We have so many, I don't know the exact number of cross-country I put it in, but the involvement is huge, and I got a message from Mary Bottalotta, 35% of our kids are in chorus. So, we're giving them, you know, that's why kids want to come to school. They want to feel connected, right? So, we are doing the right there, for sure.
All right. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
I know with English and math, have we, do they have like a math club or a book club? I mean, that could be something where it's fostering them to get together, but it could also raise those scores because, you know, they pick a book together as a team, and they read the book together as a team, or even just, you know, a math club where maybe they're, you know, they're teams, and they try to do the equations together, and one of them wins, he tweaks something, and also, that could help with attendance as well. So, that was just something I wanted to throw out.
We are, right now, putting the clubs together for the middle school, so if they come and go, we've had book club, and then it might not be offered. They run the gamut.
You could create a party, you might even get, like, some of the art kids to go in because they could illustrate something, and we had a tablet working, we got our people.
We did do incentive through the Lexia last year as well, you know, if they read so much, you know. And that, again, fifth and sixth will buy into that. Seventh and eighth, a little different agenda, but.
Thank you. Jocelyn Sherman, just a question with the first goal, with the increased proficiency and also the, addressing the truancy. Would we, would you consider making those measurable? Like how are you gonna, they're not measurable. So like, would you aim for 1%, 2%, 3%? I just, in my profession, if I put goals down, I always get hammered if they're not measurable. So just curious.
Yeah, I can add those in for sure. I think, and I might've taken that, I think that the reading in math was 5%. We haven't for truancy, but I know what numbers look like when they're good. But I, I agree with you. Definitely put those in.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Next up, we have the elementary schools. I don't know if you're all going together or one at a time. I'll let you decide.
And Madam Chair, the elementary principals will present together. And unfortunately, Ms. Poit, the principal of Ranger, fell ill tonight. And so she sent her condolences and wished she could be here.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Amy Donley Roach and Mr. Aruda. Joao Aruda, I apologize. I'm not good at pronouncing in Portuguese.
She might need to go to the ASO.
I may. I would love to. It would be an honor. So we're here together representing the three elementary schools. Each school has its own school improvement plan, but they are aligned both vertically and across the grade levels. Just briefly, want to mention our needs assessments. Last spring, each of the school improvement teams did meet to develop goals and continue to align them to the vertical pieces that are district-wide, pre-K to 12. We looked at our 22, 23 state assessment performances, which is all you have at that point in the year, as well as the results of our ongoing benchmarking, parent surveys, the SurveyWorks data, which is parent input as well as staff and student input, and also staff surveys from the end of the year. So that needs assessment was done in the spring and then we did align our plans over the summer. So we're gonna focus on academic excellence and student well-being tonight. Just to tackle academic excellence, we do have the same three goal areas as the other grade spans.
Slide one.
It's coming, I'm sure. Perfect. So in mathematics, you can see the specific end goal there. We will be using Star Math Scaled Scores to do our best to benchmark student growth across this school year. We've just completed the beginning of the year scaled scores and those should drive and indicate improvements in the state assessment, the Rhode Island Comprehensive Assessment System. Fort Barton's goal is to be at 64%. Rangers is 64%. This is percentage of students who meet or exceed proficiency. And Pecassett's goal is 55. You will see that the gap there between the schools is closing, which is great news as we, as we implement our Eureka Math Squared curriculum. We have training in that as well, which speaks to the employee development goal and time for teachers to work together to really do that well. I know our faculty meeting today at Pecassett focused, for a portion of the meeting, on that math curriculum and how we wanna really make sure we're doing that well. So we're seeing growth there and we're also, you know, hoping to see it continue in the state assessment scores. In reading as well, you can see we're doing a similar, similar plan where each grade level will have five percentage point increase as measured by scaled scores, which of course are nationally normed in English, language arts. And that should drive the state assessment results as well. And you can see that over time, we're hoping that the 24, 25 state assessment will reach these levels of students who are meeting or exceeding proficiency in reading. To do that, we will use the benchmark data. We also do use Lexia and Foundations and our Witten Wisdom curriculum and really drilling down into the data. So our teachers will have targeted professional learning in all of those curriculum this year, very specific. And then also review of how to use the data, both for Renaissance and, which is the STAR data, and for Foundations and Lexia, which are very robust ways to predict students' performance and make sure we're personalizing learning. In writing this year, as you heard, we have this K-12 initiative. This year, though, we are expecting all elementary teachers to come up with six common writing assessments at each grade level and to identify those assessments and then review the results of those assessments at the building level and at the district level. And they will be determining what they are coming from our curriculum, Common Core and Next Generation Science Standards, and then discussing the results to make sure that we have rigorous and high standards for all the students. You'll see there professional learning time, just to go back for one moment on writing. At the bottom there, we will this year, for the first time, have district-wide remote professional, professional learning communities. And those have started this week and last week. So all six, for example, fourth grade teachers met yesterday morning to start this process. And they're finally able to do that at least monthly, which is an improvement at the elementary level and the result of aligning our three schedules.
I'm looking at the goal for attendance. And as educators, we are looking at the Tiverton School Strategic Plan. And as you heard here tonight, we are retaining 100% graduation at the high school. We have basically about 98-plus percentage of students at the high school that are, that are on track. So we know that the number one priority for the Tiverton School Department is academic excellence. But we also know that academic excellence and good attendance go hand in hand. And studies have showed a positive correlation between good school attendance and academic success. So absenteeism, tardiness, early dismissals, they do disrupt the continuity of the learning. So one of the goals is to reduce chronic absenteeism. And this started in 23, 24 school year, from 25% to 10% by 2027. So we are looking as by June 2025, the percentage of students who are chronically absent will decrease and we're looking into the 5% also. And this will be addressed through an enhanced process for communicating, monitoring and interviewing, intervening, I'm sorry, with students and their families. So we are looking to students that are 10% chronic absentee, that those students will be tracked. We are looking into making phone calls to the homes. Letters will be mailed as Sue explained, the tier one, two and three. And we also, in-person meetings with parents or guardians will take place. And if needed, the SRO will be sent to the home to bring the child to school. And if at all, all else fails, and we hope not, then the truancy documentation will be filed.
Thank you so much. Ranger and Fort Barton also have a goal around students who are differently abled. That includes students with individual education plans and students with 504s. This, as was previously mentioned, is one of the goals that the state sort of flagged the two schools to have. And the goals are a little bit different at each school. Certainly in terms of measurability, each of the goals is measurable. Back to attendance for a minute, I remember that Fort Barton had 18 or 12% of chronic absenteeism and it's gonna go down by 3% there. But at, you know, at Ranger, Pecassett, it will be 5%. So it just was dependent on the data and the reasons behind each story around each child. In terms of this goal or these goals for students who are differently abled, the achievement of students who are differently abled will rise. This subgroup of students does make growth, but obviously, sort of by definition, if they're, if my disability is impacting my learning adversely, I may demonstrate it differently and not demonstrate it as well on a standardized assessment. So certainly, this goal relates to professional learning and the staff development we're working on in terms of our educators having time and training to universally design instruction. It also has to do with the way we schedule things to ensure that there's collaborative time between the general educators and special educators and other providers and really making sure that we are providing support in the least restrictive environment for students. At Fort Barton, just for your, those of you who like the detail, at Fort Barton, the achievement of our students, the goal is that the achievement of our students who are differently abled will rise from a baseline of 13% of students who are identified as disabled and were meeting or exceeding proficiency. And at Ranger, the goal is a little bit different in terms of the number of students with special needs who will show higher growth rates. If you love statistics, you know that students, or any of us who start out with a lower level of understanding should show higher growth when given high-quality instruction. And so that's the goal for Ranger. And the goal is proficiency at Fort Barton for those students who are identified as disabled. So they're a little bit different goals. They did come as a flagged subgroup from the state. And it is something we're addressing at all three schools in terms of the professional learning and collaborative time that the staff have. We're happy to entertain any questions.
I'll open it up to the board.
First of all, thank you. How's Pecassett going, Ms. Donley Roach?
It's wonderful.
How's first three weeks there?
Great.
Good. Awesome. Mr. Aruda, how's everything at Fort Barton going?
I'm extremely delighted to be there.
Awesome.
I've had a tremendous experience, very good experience with students, faculty and families.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very happy to be there.
Awesome. Wishing you the best of a very successful year to both of you and to Ms. Poit, who's not here, but thank you. Appreciate it.
No, okay. I'm still a little bit stuck on this goal for Ranger and Fort Barton being, not mentioning a similar goal for Pecassett with differently abled students. Can you help me understand that a little bit?
I am new to Pecassett, but I'll do my best. My understanding is that there's not as much of a spread statistically between the number of students across the board, the all-student level of proficiency and the subgroup level of proficiency.
Okay.
So the higher the all-student proficiency gets, perhaps the spread increases.
Okay.
That's my best, non-educated guess as I continue to dig into the data and look forward to seeing the RICAS results that should be coming soon.
Thank you. I'm not gonna torture you with any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Do we have any questions from the audience? I wanna be fair. We've allowed for the others. No? Okay. Thank you. Great presentations, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. Last on our agenda, school committee oversight of capital spending and possible vote. Dr. Sanquioni, did you wanna kick it off?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you may recall at your last meeting, you approved the two memos that I provided to you in your packet. And my understanding now is that the town council might address these issues next Monday. So again, just to remind you that we had been allocated $255,000 for some doors. Our bid price came in much less. And then you had approved four other smaller projects that we're hoping that the revenue, the savings off that door bid could be generated toward that. And some of these are critical, obviously, to have the heat at the middle school before the winter comes and some of the other things. I know you've already approved that. And then the second memo just explains the locker room fitness project, how we were funded on that. So we were funded with $1.3 million. We knew the project was gonna come in at about 2.1, 2.2, but we always knew that we're going to receive reimbursement back from RIDE. We're scheduled to receive about $1.7 million back over the next couple of years, $1 million this year. So it will more than cover the difference. And just in talking with town administrator, we recognize moving forward, projects need to be funded the full amount so that when the reimbursements come in, because they lag a year. So I'm hopeful that, that revenue will be provided to us to pay the bills at this time, knowing that the reimbursement is coming and that reimbursement then can go back to the funding source that provided it at this time. So those are the two things. There, you know, all of our projects have been completed on time and on budget. We've had multiple projects over the last three years. We track them closely. And, you know, we're looking forward to getting some other projects funded if possible.
Okay, thank you. And to dovetail on that, we, we have in our packets this evening the list of items that we will be asking for, funding for, totaling $127,000 next week at the town council meeting. We had also previously submitted a number of safety and security-related items that I'm hoping will be considered as well, if you can check into that.
I will.
The, and thank you for this breakdown of, and line-level detail of the locker room project. One of the concerns that has come up at the town level, of course, is, you know, this whole leveraging future reimbursements against current projects and such. And so you're right, I think in the future, we can probably expect that any requests will have to be either funded in full upfront or we will be able to use reimbursements that are already in hand for a project the size of the locker room that just wasn't even going to be possible. But I, I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, it's going to end up working out. I think what's gonna happen is that the town will go ahead and advance that from their casino money pending the receipt of the reimbursement from RIDE. But when that reimbursement comes in, it will go back to the casino money pot.
As it should.
As it should. The, when they created the ordinance to use the casino funds for capital projects and to control those decisions with reference to the allocations, I don't think they, they, or I, or we considered how to manage the accounting for this in the back and forth. And this is, you know, now that we're a couple of years in, I think a lot of people are starting to realize that we need to tighten up. My, you know, I would hope that the town, on the town side, that they, they would consider, you know, developing a policy to guide the users of those funds as to, with respect to the reporting and reimbursement expectations. And, you know, I would fully support the development of that and would be happy to, to help collaborate with that. On the same vein, I, you know, the school committee has not, outside of approving the capital requests since this program was put into place, outside of approving those requests, the school committee has had no involvement in the, you know, in, in the oversight of the spending, in the monitoring of the progress. You have your building committee who's meaning to talk about the, the project progress, of course. And they do talk about the, the financial aspects of it, but they, they don't really provide oversight to it. I do think that the school committee should be looking closely at the spending that is related to everything involving the schools. And, and that would include this capital spending, even though we, you know, again, we don't make the decisions to approve that spending, but we should be monitoring it. So what I would like to do is to ask the members of the school committee to consider a motion to refer this to the policy subcommittee for the potential development of a policy specific to the expectations of reporting to the school committee the results of capital spending moving forward. And obviously, you know, we have a new finance director on board. I think, you know, coming together with that reporting will be something he can easily tackle. But I would like to have it put into policy that the school committee will adopt this policy that asserts oversight of the casino allocation spending to ensure, first of all, that we're fully aware of the progress and that we are also aware, should there be any requirement, to go back to the town because... be any requirement to go back to the town because, let's say, you know, the original estimates came in short, and we need to ask for more. So, I think having that involvement as we go along would be important, so. Do I have a motion from the school committee to refer this to the policy subcommittee?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on what I was just, you know, trying to explain?
That was long.
It was long.
I think I got parts of it. No, I understand what you're saying. You wanna refer it back so we make a policy, now that we have someone on board, so we can put the capital expenses and how they're gonna be, how they're gonna be refunded, is that the word?
Well, more, more that we have the information at hand, I think what happened this time around, you know, Dr. Sanquioni and I went in front of the town council a couple of months back to make our requests, and, you know, we were shown a report that showed that we had, quote-unquote, overspent by $182,000 in allocation they had done three years ago. You know, at that time, I had no knowledge of it. It was because we hadn't seen any of that, right? They, we approved the request, but then as the, as the, as the projects commence, they submit for the, to the town for payment, and we're out of that loop. So, I would like to insert us into that loop so that we can be fully knowledgeable of the spending that is happening with relation to capital.
Make sense?
Was that long, too?
It was a lot shorter.
Okay. Sorry to put you to sleep. Okay, so, thank you very much. Oh, do we have a vote? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Future meetings, our next meeting is scheduled for October 8th and October 22nd, next two. I will be looking to schedule a finance subcommittee meeting before the October 8th meeting. Dr. Sanquioni?
Yep.
And now, we will move on to executive session, so I will ask for a motion to enter into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 4246-583 to discuss safety and security protocol specifically to cybersecurity. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We are in executive session. Thank you.